All right, welcome to the December 12 planning board meeting. I'm Gabe Whitney.
I'm Jim Williams.
Jerry Mitchell.
And we'll be going through tonight's agenda. First call of order, we have established a quorum. Any amendments to the agenda? All right, we have for applicants, first is a non-conforming expansion on Quaker Point Road. Steven Theodore, if you're here.
Yes.
Hi, you can pull up your chair.
And just full disclosure to the board, I've worked with four Theodore four and I've worked on this law too.
Okay.
So as far as subject, just full disclosure. You know, I've worked on most of them honestly, so I don't see a big conflict.
I don't know.
I think I want to talk about that.
City manager issue.
Do you feel that you have an appropriate?
Yeah, no, no, I'll be ejected.
Okay. All right, so I'll let you.
Sure, okay, good evening, so yes, my name's Steven Theodore, in fact, I'm representing John German and Vicky Curran who own the property and also own the abutting property here and a small house across the way. This is basically a request for greatest practical extent determination from the board to deal with the fact that this is within the 75-foot setback on the south side and we're further constrained on the north side by a 24-foot setback from a right-of-way. It is not part of the Quaker Point Road, it is a paper road. This acts now really as a right-of-way to a couple of other properties down on the point. I think the most important information to get across to you tonight is what we've done is to the greatest practical extent, reoriented the building as much as possible to keep it outside of the 75-foot setback line. So the main house is here, there's a garage that will be entirely outside of the setback and then a small portion of the main house will remain, or the new house will remain essentially where the existing portion of the barn was. So as you know, otherwise in terms of the other components, the septic, proposed septic field is here. We have a, we've done an evaluation and determined that that's adequate. We will be locating a well in the far sort of east corner of the property as well, so that will not have any impact. I think what I would like to do is just really take you through the calculations that you have on your supplemental package. This, I must say, was probably one of the most complicated calculations for determining what exists and what we are allowed to expand. So I have keyed these plans hopefully to clarify. So I'm going to take you through, these are the calculations that indicate the areas that are inside the 75-foot setback line, so we're establishing what's existing. So these are, they're one, two, three blocks, so the area that's inside the shoreline zone of the existing house represents about 313 square feet and a volume of 3,141. And then this area, because it's a porch, only, we were only calculating the actual area at this location. This is the barn, it sits on the property, it has a floor area of 292 square feet and a volume of 3,577. So that's on the ground floor and then on the upper level, this is the portion of the building which we've documented in the drawings, the existing conditions. Building has been documented pretty clearly. There's an area of about 120 square feet with a volume of 996 and then a loft inside this barn which has a floor area of 138 square feet. So just by way of trying to explain the existing condition, this is also a diagram that shows the existing overlaid on the proposed. The proposed is essentially for the most part outside the 75-foot. So we've also taken into account in our calculation the fact that there's a provision in the ordinance that allows you to put a foundation under a new or a reconstruction of the house inside the 75-foot setback and as long as that foundation, as long as the proposed building doesn't, is not more than three feet from the existing grade, which in this case is approximately 29, to the top of the foundation, of the new foundation, doesn't exceed three feet, that area and volume doesn't count towards the calculation.
Isn't it higher than that, isn't it? You're talking about the depth.
I'm talking about the distance from the existing. So in other words, the existing grade is roughly, well, is it 29? Our new, what we're doing is we're proposing the new elevation to be at 33. Elevation 33 to the top of the new finished floor. So essentially, the area, as it's indicated in the ordinance, that area is excluded from the calculation and that's why if you'll go through, if you want to go through the actual numbers, which I can do with you.
So you're saying that the existing basement is excluded?
That's correct, with a proposed basement. Currently, the ba, there's really no basement in this house, but we are planning to provide a basement. But because of the section in the ordinance that allows you to build that basement without accounting towards the volume or square footage calculation, it allows us to stay within the 30% expansion that's allowed. So it's on, if you'd like to. It's on page 10. It says, "Where a new and larger replacement foundation is constructed on a non-conforming structure in the shoreline zone, the structure and new foundation must replace such the setback requirements," that's to the greatest practical extent. And then it goes on, and then it says, "If the completed foundation does not extend beyond the exterior dimensions of the structure except for expansion conforming with the articles which we need."
What section is this, I'm sorry?
It's on page 10, it's in non-conforming structures. At the bottom for. Bottom paragraph, last paragraph.
I got you, thank you, sorry, I gotta hold. Go ahead.
And then, so that, and the foundation does not cause the structure to be elevated by more than three additional feet as measured from the uphill side of the structure from original ground level to the bottom of the first floor, so it shall not be considered to be an expansion of the structure.
Did you see that?
Yeah. So I mean, and this is kind of a textbook example of the wording in that, of the ordinance. In other words, I think the idea being that they want to encourage, you know, full foundations under these buildings but not have that essentially, you know, completely excluding of it to use that. So.
So what's the, what's the clearance going to be in the basement?
It will be eight feet.
Okay.
They'll be full headroom down below. Which you can see in this drawing. So that's, yeah, so we will be raising the first floor elevation approximately two feet higher than it is currently, which will, there will be, there will have to be some, some probably blasting, some excavation in order to get that full headroom. But that, that does, that would provide us with a daylight basement essentially on the lower level. So if you'd like, I can, you know, I can go through those calculations just to, but you know, we've documented the existing building and then these really just indicate the areas that are, because it's a deck, only area is counting, this area is the area that we're not using. In other words, our building is set, we are increasing, we're actually making the building less non-conforming because we're pushing it back as much as we possibly can. So there are areas where we actually get a credit for, in other words, we're going to be removing portions of the building that extend into the setback and we're taking that as a, essentially as a credit towards the expansion. I hope that, you know. It's a little bit tricky-ish to get across, but that's what these, these are color-coded and they're keyed to the, to this, to that page, which is your volume calculation. So I've broken it down into the areas to establish what the existing square footage is, which in this case is 879 square feet for the area that's inside the shoreline zone for the main house and then, and the barn, both together, and then a total square, cubic feet footage of 7,674. And then I go on to indicate, to show that the allowable expansion is 264 square feet and when you add those two together like this, you'd be total allowable, the same with the volume calculation. And I had gone through and tallied up the areas, all these areas that are keyed here, A through K, and come up with a total of, a total add of 194 square feet, which is essentially 22% or 21% expansion versus the 60.
So is that C and D, is that deck?
This is deck. This is actually a connector. That's why C has a volume and an area, D only has the deck. And that's the same for this piece as well. This is the, again, tried to color-code the areas where we're looking, we're asking, we're tallying this as a credit, so that area is actually a negative number, that's why. Because we're removing areas from the shoreline zone, we come up with a total that's actually, you know, less, we're extending less than the allowable 30% in terms of area and then in terms of volume, it's actually really negligible because we're essentially, you know, we've configured the building to conform as much as possible with that volume calculation. So that, as you can see, again, this section, the building, you know, by and large, the bulk of the building is outside of that 75, this is the 75-foot setback. So we've reoriented the building to allow that expansion. As well as, you know, being constrained on the north side. The building actually does encroach on the 24-foot setback from the right-of-way and what we are proposing is that portion of our building would actually encroach at the depth in a similar way. So this piece would actually project a little bit beyond, but would not increase non-conformity.
So what is the, the other way?
Yes.
What is that building then?
This is the garage, which is entirely outside of 75-foot setback. So in other words, that's not counted in any of this because it's, you know, meets the requirement of the setback.
So what are the plans for the garage?
What are the, what are the plans? Let me show you.
Is it going to be dis-rebuilt or dis-refurbished or is it going to be?
No, that's a new structure.
That's a what?
That's new.
Oh, okay.
It's entirely new. The outline of what's existing is really, is this, is this line that you see here and here. This is, everything else is proposed new, you know, to meet the setback.
So on that, where you said on the floor.
Yes.
Where it says barn, it looks like the existing building is quite a lot closer to the water. Is that correct?
That's correct, exactly. We're reducing the non-conformity.
So are you, are you gonna, are you gonna do a complete tear-down and then rebuild?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. There's no other, really, no other way to reconfigure this in order to, you know, to make the house provide the amenities that they're looking for by rebuilding on that footprint. So I can, what I can do is go through the proposed plan, plans with you, but I just really wanted to. So the main plan is here. This shows the new house, again, the 75-foot setback. The outline of the existing house is ghosted behind as well as here and then the new garage. And the second floor plan is essentially on the same footprint, but it sets back even closer to the 75-foot setback. So that, again, puts the bulk of the expansion outside of the 75-foot setback and inside of the 24-foot setback from the right-of-way.
So all of these numbers that you included.
Yes.
Those are all keyed to just, just the volumes and square footage of the shoreline zone?
That's correct.
Okay.
Because that's how, you know, that's all we're dealing with. It's just expansion within the shoreline zone. As a, anything outside of the shoreline zone doesn't fall under those same requirements.
Within the 75, it's all the shoreline zone, right?
Exactly, that's correct. So that's where the calculation of what exists and what's proposed, that's where that calculation comes in. So I know that, you know, there's some scrutiny that needs to happen, but I think, you know, these plans document pretty clearly what's there, what exists and what we're proposing and that that meets the requirements of being less than 30% expansion. I think the real thing that allows us to get some additional square footage is the provision in the ordinance that does allow you to put a new foundation under the structure as long as it doesn't raise the height of the building by more than three feet. So we've obviously, we've met the coverage requirements for the lot, we've met the building height requirements for the lot, the application.
So show me where your well's going to go.
Say again?
Show me where your well's going to go.
Here.
Right there?
Yes.
So you're going to be able to meet the 100-foot separation?
We will need to add casing to the well.
Okay.
So that we can meet the, we're aiming to get the 60-foot setback from the well to the, to the subject system by adding casing to that well.
What the existing lot is used for water?
It's not clear. They've actually drilled, they've drilled another well, they have drilled a well that unfortunately has saltwater intrusion, so that's why we're going to this other location which has a better chance of, you know. But, yeah.
That happens so much.
It does.
Especially when the ledge is soft and, you know, sedimentary rather than metal.
There's saltwater intrusion.
Yeah. But, so, very good? I don't have any more questions? No, I'm just reading what he pointed out on page 10. I just didn't know if that was for more so, but it does say enlarged, whenever new and large, so I think it does fall under that. Any thoughts, John?
That was my interpretation of it, Gary, when I outlined that we had meetings and we were all this.
Yep. Any comments from the public?
Are there any comments from the, from the public? We can start going through our checklist. Plan must be on 24 by 36. Type of block with orders needed, any data for combination, setup, care, text, assessment, map, and lot info. Did I miss the tax assessment, was that in here?
Yes, it's on his application on the front.
All right. North arrow, yeah? Absent current lot order, source due references, that is in here.
Yes.
Numbers and designations of zone districts and overlays. Lot dimensions, property lines, and area.
Yeah, that's a survey from, survey, sidelines.
And you said they also own the property next door as well?
They do own the property to the east of them, yes.
Names of abutting property owners with tax assessment, map, lot numbers.
We get book and page number on here?
Yes, that's right, that's right.
Say that as well.
Yeah. Location of rights of ways, public and private, including roads, travel ways.
Yeah, that's in there.
Do you read that?
Location of high tide mark, rivers, streams, and brooks.
Which is again, this is the hat line for the property.
Location and outline of all existing buildings within the property. Yep. Existing proposed setback dimensions of structures to the shore, front, rear, and side. Yep. Areas to be cleared of tree growth.
So that's something that I discussed with Jonathan. We plan to do is fly with the trees that we need to cut and then review it with him before we go ahead and proceed with that.
All right, so that would be pending. Here's cut, fill, grading, and other earth moving.
That's also indicated in the foundation plan, on the foundation plan and the sections.
All right. Location of wetlands, I don't think there are.
There are no wetlands, there are none.
Flood hazard area.
So what I did is I included the FEMA map for the area that indicates it as a, that's in the package.
It's pretty, pretty high.
Yes, it is, exactly. It's elevation, I mean, we're at elevation 30, 30 first floor elevation, so we're well outside the tide.
Location and size of existing sewer systems and water supply. Did you identify what they were using for present?
Again, that is not known, I don't think there's any, we did not have any evidence, I didn't find any evidence of it, but we are proposing a new septic field outside of the envelope that we, we're holding out which is in this location which Jerry has indicated. We actually need to submit that HHH-200 form, but it's an entirely new system.
Right, but like you couldn't find anything on what was there?
Correct.
Soil erosion and sedimentation control measures.
We've indicated there where we would.
Moving back.
Yes, this line is actually, this would be the siltation site that we would put in and we have erosion control notes on this site plan that indicate what procedures the site excavator and the site contractor should follow.
Okay, not going to get this call to kill farm. Application. Yep, that was, verification of right, title of interest in the property, deed was included. Letter of agent authorization.
I had included that as well.
Location, description, or map.
So this is that location plan we have included on the site plan.
Great, photos of the building to be expanded.
Those are also included in the package.
Yes, those. Complete site plot plan on 24 by 36, got those. Another erosion and sediment control included in the building plans, 24 by 36, existing structure including building outline and dimensions. All good with that. And number nine, building plans, core structure highlighting the expansion. That was nice, the overlays.
Thank you.
Yeah, made it a lot easier to understand. Copy of deed and all covenants or restrictions on the existing lot. Yep, yeah, I saw that. Expansion sketches to support the percentage worksheet calculations. That's good. Type and adequacy of water supply for expansion.
I mean, that's to be determined, we have not drilled the well as of yet. I mean, we are planning to do that prior to doing the septic field. I think that's good practice, but that is in the works. So as I said, they did drill a well there that was not successful, but we're going to try again.
They drilled one already?
There was one that was drilled, it was viable.
That's, yeah, okay.
It has a saltwater intrusion.
All right, so that would be.
That's to be, yes.
And then type and adequacy of sewage disposal, that's proposed. Driveway access.
All right, that's indicated, yeah, in this area, that's the access to the garage and turn around and guest parking, that's directly off of that right-of-way.
Okay.
It's an unpaid right-of-way, so that would all be gravel as well.
Oh, good. The affidavit for recording.
Yeah. I have that filled out, that's something I, again, I think I would do with my John team after this.
So this looks good, except for the, um, water supply and the, um, the trees to be flagged.
Yes.
So we would, um, submit exceptions pending those two items.
Yeah.
And, uh, I don't know, I don't have the approval, I think, uh.
Those are the conditions, conditions of approval.
Yeah.
We, we, like, usually the well stuff, we don't really, right, I mean, you're, you know, worst case you do like desalination.
That's right.
You know? I wouldn't.
No, we don't do any of that.
Yeah.
I think it is basically the, it's the HHE two hundred and the tree, um, locations of the, the.
It's not always an issue, I mean, they get water, it's, it's solved.
Right. But you can, you can try to.
Yes, that's correct, I mean, there, there, there are a number of successful wells in, uh, on this whole point, so I'm, I'm confident that, that will.
Good luck. Yes, um, so motion to pass with the approval of the, of the tree cutting?
I think that's John's anyways, right, John, that's kind of John's.
So then we just approve it and then that's something that you take care of?
Yep.
All right, then I'll, um, I guess I propose that.
We could just say, uh, anything without approval.
All right, well, yeah, I need John's approval of the, of the tree cutting, and I think this is, I, um, what's the proper?
So you move to approve?
I moved to approve, sorry, I'm brand new chairman, so bear with me. I moved to approve, um, this application, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
All right. So I'll fill.
So the permanent application should show.
Yeah.
Nine point one.
So his name for.
I would say that, uh, be the hero, John, here.
John, I think, yes.
Be approval to him.
Yes.
Well, you brought in a very complete presentation, so that's very helpful.
Good.
Thank you.
Yeah, this was, as I said, one more difficult, uh,
Yes.
calculations to do, but.
It looks like the road is not used where it was thought to be.
That's correct, it was, it's really a paved road, there was, they, there's a lot of, um, you know, discussion in, in the survey about just what the status of that road is, because it actually, uh, I don't think in all cases is sixteen feet wide, which is what's required, but, um, again, it really is just a path to these two small cottages down below, so there's not a lot of traffic there.
I have to back to the map to the lot owner.
So no plans to change the dock or anything like that?
Correct, no, I mean, this is a new dock, it's, it's there and, uh, no, twenty-four, really just, uh, develop the existing paths that are there and to make the connection to the water, um, a little better.
I do know some people that have, they had problems with salt intrusion.
Yes.
In, in a cemetery type rock.
Yes.
And so they had to go to an osmosis system.
Right.
Which is.
It's very energy.
Their complaint was it was noisy.
Yeah, and it's quite, I think, you know.
So, and it's expensive.
Yes, no, it is, I mean, basically.
There have been people who have located, like, in a building outside of, you know, all the equipment they need, they just put it in its own building and then it's, it's not awesome.
There is a well on the property that they currently own, this is got a very high capacity, so there is a possibility that they could.
It's always a problem, especially with.
Right, right.
Yep. Yeah, you work carefully.
I hope you were very proud of this, right? Okay?
All right, thank you very much.
That's good. Um, we, this is going to be whatever the, it's non-compounding.
All right, next up is the pre-application workshop with Stan Tech.
Yep, I'm for Barnes with Stan Tech, the, uh, the project app, can hear is actually Norway Solar, Jeff Martin and Neil.
I'm Jeff Martin with Norway Solar, um, and working with Stan Tech with Barnes, assisting us with preparing the process of, I'll turn it over to Brooke in just a minute to go through some specifics of the project, but, um, just wanted to say a couple of things first. Just introduce Norway Solar, uh, for everyone that hasn't heard of us, we're, um, a solar company, uh, based in Lake of Redemption, uh, Vermont, and we're a full-service solar company, we do everything from, uh, the design development to engineering, construction of solar projects, um, we also do ongoing operation maintenance of solar, uh, projects, so we have a division called, uh, Runtime Solar, um, that's responsible for maintaining all the projects that we have structured. We've done over thirty megawatts of solar in northern New England, so in Maine, we actually remark. We're focused on, uh, larger scale commercial projects, so mostly projects that, that towns and school districts, small businesses, nonprofits, um, and we're in the process of developing eleven projects in Maine, and this, this one here in West Bay. Some of you may have been on the planning board, and we came in to discuss a project on the same parcel, uh, back in twenty twenty-two, um, that would have required a, a rezoning, so we've kind of gone back to the drawing board, we've redesigned the project, um, it's now located, all of them urban development districts, so it's all within a district where solar is allowed use, um, it's a smaller scale project than what we had proposed originally a couple of years ago, um, with a different access as well, so it's pretty much completely redesigned, um, but obviously on the same parcel. So I'll turn it over to Brooke for some of the details of the project.
Unless you have any questions for Jeff about, about Norwich.
I'll share. Yeah, please.
Uh, Brooke Barnes with Stan Tech Consulting, we're working on the eleven projects that , uh, Norwich has here in Maine, as well as about two dozen other projects for other solar developers, um, as, as Jeff noted, and actually I love that this is here because it really shows where we are in the zones, it's this parcel right up here, that would be the parcel that'd be developed, and it shows up here in the, in the urban zone, and I think originally they were looking to put something over the rural residential, and they've gotten guidance from the town, put it in the urban zone, uh, so the, the access will come up here and come up to this parcel, and that's what you see here, that's where the array would be.
So is that all of the industrial part, the access?
Yes, yeah, the industrial park is, is here, I think this piece is called King's Highway, um, it, it comes in this way and then sort of ends and there's a log yard there, um, at the bottom, and this is the old road that used to run up and then it heads up this way, uh, it's just a, mostly a ski trail now, I sent in some photos, I don't know if they, they made it to you, but some photos of what the road looks like now, um, this is all pretty heavily cut, um, John Engelhardt is the owner of both sides of this, and it's, it's a small array relatively speaking, um, trying to think of one around here that you look at that you might say, oh, maybe that, but most of what's being built now is around twenty acres, and this one's going to be, I think, five acres within the fence line, um, the fence line is, are these dots here, um, so it's, it's nine, it's nine hundred and seventy-five kilowatts, most of what you're seeing these days are four to five megawatts and, um, sort of larger projects, as with any solar project, you need to clear out beyond the, um, solar panels so you don't get shading and basically lose energy, so on this diagram, it shows a laydown area here, as you're coming in to lay down the, um, the parts and pieces as they put the project together, panel array running, um, east and west here, and then the clearing limits are this, um, circular line here, this laydown area would all be revegetated and grow back, and then you just end up with the, the panels here, I don't know if any of you are familiar with the area, but you sort of go off the road and it's kind of flatter up on top there, and that's where the panels would be located. The electrical supply from the, would be generated, it'd be underground electric, this would be a large scale solar project under your ordinance, and that requires underground electric through the, through the project itself on the site, so it'd be underground electric there, and then go to above ground electric to come down and connect to the central main grid, um, here at the point of interconnect. Um, again, fairly typical, uh, I have a lot to add.
So the soul line, uh, connected to the grid, is it, uh, what, what will that look like, I mean, will it be a single wire and a neutral?
Yes, it's, it's, it's a simple, it's a simple arrangement, and this is the existing, um, CMP pole line here.
Okay, that, you're not connecting to that though?
No, no, that's a transmission line, and a, a project this small needs to connect to the distribution grid.
So what's the voltage you're putting into the grid?
It's twelve and a half. Twelve and a half.
So seventy-two hundred phase to ground?
That's, you, that's a question for our engineers, I want to say that.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that question.
But that's, the grid in that area is, you know, for distribution is twelve, if you said four seventy-five or something?
It's matching.
That's, okay.
Yeah, there's no reason hate for a substation or, um, any kind of upgrade, uh, like that.
So, but somewhere you convert that power from the solar cells to the pole?
Yes, yeah.
Right, where do you do that?
And the, this has string inverters, is that right?
Yeah.
So there, it's, a lot of solar projects have a central platform where the power comes in, and then it's converted so that it can go to the grid, and this has string inverters, which means there's small inverters throughout the project, so by the time it leaves the project, it's converted and then, um, connects into the grid at the appropriate voltage.
So it's converted to twelve thousand volts on, at each individual location?
Uh, no, it's converted, converted from AC to DC.
Okay.
And.
So it's a voltage on that, AC?
I don't have any other details, do you have?
Yeah, I can.
We can get it in the.
We can certainly, we can certainly get, uh, the answers to those questions.
Okay.
That's a question for our engineers.
Well, that wasn't the details, isn't it?
Yeah.
Everything, yeah, just, everything has to go through central main power, so we, so we have to go through a study with central main power, uh, in order to interconnect to the distribution grid.
I really just, my question stems from what the voltage would be in the underground portion, and, uh, you must be converting that to AC somewhere.
Yeah.
And it was individual locations, then you're converting it to seventy-two hundred on phase ground, uh, twelve volt, five volt, whatever this phase pays somewhere, so those details would be helpful.
Yep.
So there is an existing road, uh, Woods Road or something, it goes up most of the way.
Yep.
And then the power line you're proposing will be along that road?
That's correct.
And would you own the pole line or the central main power?
That's a great question.
Typically, I can just say typically the pole line is owned to the point of interconnect, and then there are usually three or four poles that, that switches on them, and they're the, the transition from project to central main power.
Yeah, and that, it's likely, uh, project owned, but I, I'd have to confirm.
Well, I mean, if the, if you own it, the, uh, then if there's any trees down or anything, then you have to go fix it, if they own it, you have to pay upfront some money, but, so they, they'll own it, but.
Yeah, typically.
I, I, I'm just, I'm just curious.
It's at the.
I don't think all matters on your project, but, uh, if, if you are putting out, how much, out of those solar panels, maximum do you expect?
It's a nine hundred and seventy-five kilowatt system.
So if you are putting out nine hundred and seventy-five kilowatts, so if you, if you have a tree down on the line, and it's something you, you know, you, you can't put that into the grid unless, right, unless it's repaired.
Right.
Okay. So what's, what are the dimensions on the road that you have built in here?
Well, that's, uh, we'll look to the town and the fire chief primarily to provide us with information about what they're looking for, um, you know, we'll run this by the fire chief and when the time, when we get closer, this is a conceptual plan, when we get closer to the, the actual plan and make sure that we're reading whatever road dimensions that, that he's after, you know, typically an access road will be sixteen, and then there'll be a hammerhead with adequate turning radius for them to get up there and move fire truck around, either to.
Yeah, we, and we need to get tractor trailers up, up the access and be able to turn around in order to get equipment to the logic site.
Yeah.
Is a vehicle able to drive between the, the panels?
Um, no, you, we, we get like a mower, uh, I'll, I'll slide, I'm sorry, um, we do mow it between the, the rows of panels, but it's, you probably, you could drive a pickup truck between, between the rows of panels, uh, we do use a pretty decent sized, uh, mower to maintain within the, the array area, um, but probably not larger than a pickup truck.
And that vegetation, it is all revegetated between the panels and under the panels, um, so that's part of the erosion control plan.
So how many acres of panels are you proposing?
So the total fence area, I think, is five, five point four two acres, um, so that's pretty much the acreage of the panels, it's a little bit, uh, the fence goes obviously around the panels, so it's a little bit bigger, um, and then, uh, as Brooke was saying, we also have to maintain a larger area for, for shade management, I think that's thirteen, thirteen point eight.
Okay, that's what that thirteen point eight six is.
Two whole acres, that's, that's.
Does that include the road also?
It does, that's, yeah, that's what we call the limit of disturbance, so that's the access, the temporary staging area, uh, the panels themselves, the fence area, and then the area around the panels.
Uh, the only thing I, so you go to B, like, B three, all onsite utility transmission lines should be placed underground unless the applicant demonstrates good cause, I don't think that's just talking about inside your solar field, I think that's talking about.
Dots of protection point.
Uh, 'cause we had, we had taken onsite being onsite, on the site of the solar panels, you're saying that that applies all the way down the road?
I don't know, I just, I don't, I guess.
I guess that's a question.
Yeah, I don't know.
Give us guidance on that, that would be helpful.
All onsite utility transmission lines should be placed underground unless they have been demonstrated as good cause.
Yeah, it sounds like it.
All onsite utility transmission lines extending to and from the solar, small solar, that's for small solar, I guess, that one. All onsite utility transmission lines extending to and from the solar, small solar, uh, that's for small solar, I guess, that one.
But that same language is in the large solar, about onsite, and we just interpreted this to be onsite. And where's the highway in relation to?
Is it, uh-
About here.
You can see the larger-
And is this still, is this the same landowner as last time, if the, the last one?
So it's our company that owns the parcel?
You guys bought that, and this is just the pieces out of the-
It's in the appropriate town district.
Gotcha. I don't, yeah, I don't, I guess the only thing would be like, you know, the underground thing, that would be the only thing.
Any comment from public?
I'm pleased. Uh, I assume your road in will be a private road?
Yes.
Right away? Is there anything in this whole project that generates noise?
Uh, the only thing that would generate, uh, sensor and construction, uh, would be the inverters, and those are really minimal noise levels, like, around the, uh, same noise level from a library or something like that, and that's only, uh, producing sound when the sun's shining, so, once the sun goes down, there's-
Can you see the lot members on that map, you guys are on lot thirteen, right?
Yes.
Can you see where the lot twelve is? Directly north of the- That the bound-
Yeah, I own the lot, so, yep, the boundary's right here.